This morning's agenda.
I will make a motion to approve the agenda with the changes of the removal of the acknowledgement of the vacancy on the conservation board. We've not yet received a written resignation, so we'll remove that today. And also, the request for the mask requirement for entering the courthouse.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion, second, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. We have our agenda. Next is, I have approval of minutes to be approved from October 7th, 2020, and October 14th, 2020, along with the corresponding chat logs.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from October 7th and October 14th, 2020.
I'll second.
I have a motion to second any discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Next I have is approval for claims for payment.
I'll make a motion to approve the claims for payment for October 28th, 2020.
I will second.
I have a motion, second, discussion. Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Next on the agenda, utility permits and secondary roads. Taylor.
Just up there you guys, we have had quite a few people come in for manure permits, so it's been good that you guys have gotten the word out enough. Most of it's from Iowa Select Farms, and you know, they're contractors coming in. So, you know, it is, people are doing it, they're complying. That's kind of nice for them to know what's going on. And then, we're pouring concrete today on S-75, the Durney County line, and then they're hoping tomorrow for the last one. So, it should be open, I can't guarantee by the weekend, but hopefully by early next week. Yep, and then we should be good to go for the winter and...
Yes. Okay. One question. Are we good on salt and sand supplies?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Greg is, yes.
Okay. That was my only question for...
Yep, we try to keep it full.
Okay. Always be ready. Okay. Nothing else? Move to item seven, contract for bridge replacement, ERS swap, CO42 sub 106 FF dash 42, bridge 12015, that's county, the bridge over Highway 27 over Tipton Creek.
Yep, it was the year one just south of the next to these houses. So, yes, the low bid was Taylor Construction out of New Vienna, Iowa. We'd never worked for them before, but Bruce hadn't heard anything bad about them either from other counties that enjoyed them. So, they're the low bid at $557,106.5. And, you know, we tried to, we always tried to look and see how they won the bid, and it was kind of low everywhere on all, you know, there's probably like 20, 30 different items. And let's see, and 65 working days to complete the project.
Okay.
All right. I will make a motion to approve the contract with Taylor Construction for the bridge replacement on Bridge number 12015 on Highway S-17 over Tipton Creek.
I will second.
I have a motion, second, discussion. Taylor, I would appreciate if you would elaborate on the risk versus reward by putting tighter timeframes on when it comes to penalizing, because I think, you know, you saw that at the Gifford Bridge where you were hoping to have it done sooner, but if you add extra penalties, what are the consequences compared to giving a lower way? Do you apply how that works?
Money is pretty much the biggest driver. I mean, Interstate 29 got flooded out last year. Yeah, the guy won the bid by $10 million, but there was $200,000 penalty per. So, you know, without having contracts of that size and magnitude, I mean, you know, you're talking about another 100, 200 grand per bridge maybe, just because they know they're going to get penalized because they can't get it done. So, that bridge, they still, they barely beat their working days, but they were still within it. So, yeah, pretty much money is the deciding factor. If people really want us to pay more, we'll be getting less bridges done, but they'll be open quicker. So, I think that what we're doing is good. The DOT pretty much has a formula, and they say, this is what the working days, you have a problem with it, and 100 times out of 101, we say, no problem.
All right. Thank you.
You bet.
Okay, so I have a motion, a second on the floor. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Next item I have is authorize county engineer to serve as the auctioneer to finalize sale of equipment on the county's auction.
I will make a motion to operate the engineer to serve as the auctioneer to seal the downed equipment.
I will second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Next item we have is an application for the courthouse grounds, and it was submitted by Maggie Vanderwilt for the Eldora Christmas Festival. They would like to put up a Christmas tree in the same location on the northwest corner of the courthouse in the grassy area, effective November 21st, and have it removed by January 17th. And I don't believe there are any issues last year, so I would ask for a motion to approve the request.
I will make a motion to approve the application for the use of the courthouse grounds, November 21st through January 17th.
I will second that.
Motion, second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The next item I have is tax abatement. Michelle, one?
Yeah.
Sure.
Good morning.
Hey, Michelle.
Hi. This is just a whoops, I guess, per se. A house was torn down and taken off the tax roll, and the parcel was inadvertently advertised and sold at the tax sale. The land underneath it, the tax parcel was paid, so that was leaving a house that was not even there as sold for the property taxes. So, due to that air, I believe that we need to cancel that tax sale certificate and refund the money to the tax sale holder, because it was a value that was not even there any longer. So, I would request if you could abate those taxes due to, we'll never get that payment from anyone, and due to the air of advertising it as a dwelling only with no value left, I believe that we need to just cancel that certificate and refund that tax sale holder.
Okay. And that's a amount of $82, correct, Michelle?
That's net taxes, $82, right. And at the time of the tax sale, they paid $110, and what that is was the tax, the interest, and a $20 cert fee. So, I believe that we should just return the $110 that they actually paid to us due to the air.
Okay. Thanks for the clarification.
Uh huh.
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the abatement of taxes, the 2015 taxes on Abbott lots 1 and 2 block 9, the vacant alley west and the vacant street north in the city of Ackley, and to rebate the $110 to the person purchasing the taxes. Is that correct, Michelle?
I will second.
Okay. Any discussion?
I'm pretty impressed that Michelle sold air.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
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 All right. The next item I have is set the deadline for boards and commissions applications.
Okay. I will make a motion to set the date of November 25th as the deadline for appoint, or for applicants for the board and commissions application, or to file the application.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
It'll end at the end of business day on the 25th.
Yes. The day before Thanksgiving.
To the auditor's office, correct?
Correct.
I have a motion, a second. Any further discussion?
I know, Lance, you read those off, those vacancies off last week during the meeting, and those, there will also be a notice in the pa, put in the paper as far as which boards and commissions are going to need how many vacancies filled.
And if Jess could please get those on the website as well.
Yes.
All right. She acknowledged she can do that. Anything further? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Next item is change of status, environmental health and zoning industry.
I will make a motion to increase the salary for environmental health and zoning to a salary of $52,000 a year.
I will second that.
Okay. I have a motion, a second. Any discussion?
Currently, she's at $45,000, and we have a number of employees that are making more than she is, and she's an actual department head for environmental health and zoning, but she also does a lot of other duties and responsibilities regarding the website and just a number of other things that I don't feel is, that she's being compensated for at the $45,000 hours.
I originally wanted to address this in December, but since we have a budget amendment coming up, I think it's better that it's addressed now as well, so that this can be put in a budget amendment if needed.
Good idea. Yes, correct. Good idea.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call Angela.
Renee?
Aye.
Lance?
Aye.
DJ?
Aye. Motion passing. Next item we have is, we have a pair of change of statuses for the sheriff's office.
I will make a motion to approve the change of status for the hiring of Cassidy Havens, effective November 20th, 2020, at an hourly rate of $16.48. She's being hired as a dispatcher or as permanent partner.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 I'll also make a motion to approve the resignation of Elizabeth Blade, effective October 21st, 2020, as a dispatcher. She was administrative for paperwork only and has not worked a shift since March of 2020.
I'll second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Next, Thomas, emergency management update.
All right. So, let's start with the COVID updates. Rocky put this email out last week, so up to the 23rd. 16 positive PCR tests, 16 positive antigen tests, two hospitalization, the total of 519 people tested last week. They continue, we continue with outbreak status at Hubbard Care Center and Eldsworth College. Eldsworth College has a, has a mask, they do masks throughout the facility for their education, for the whole plan as far as education, but we can't tell what kids do on their off time and when they go to private homes. So, that's, that's something that they continue to address as they go to test, they go test, public health goes and tests Eldsworth every day. Somewhere between six and a dozen every day they're doing. So, they continue to address that as we go forward. Also, last week, I think I had told you that we submitted to FEMA, to Homeland Security, and the grand total of that, I got the final paperwork back from Graham Giles, our liaison with Homeland Security. It looks like it's going to be $46,000. 75% of that coming back from the feds, 10% from the state, 15% of that is ours. But, as I said last week, CARES money was set aside to help locals cover that 15%. So, we're hoping to get that full $46,000 back. Jessica, permission on the update on voting and the Emergency Operations Center voting this year is not at City Hall in Eldora, it's at the Emergency Operations Training Center.
No, it's not. It is at City Hall, Eldora. It's not here at the courthouse.
Oh.
So, we vote at City Hall.
Who's voting in my place?
The city of Eldora.
Oh, okay.
The rural residents voted at City Hall.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. They all got postcards. They're all aware of each other.
Anyway, the only door that will be open for entry and exit will be the north door, because that's the ground level door. The west door has a set of stairs on it, and they're not public friendly as far as heels and stuff like that, so that door will be locked. And then, all the safeguards are in place, and Jessica and I worked together. Yesterday, there was a bunch of Facebook posts went out about the masks are available at the door, they'll be, everybody, everything is disposable this year. Penn, the ballot covers the whole, everything is one and done. There was a lot of money went into that process this year. And then, deratio. So, we continue to work on that. I met with Aaron Cross, the mayor of Witten, and the FEMA program manager, what we've been waiting for since the application period ended. The first program manager that was assigned, it was for the city of Witten, so we met last Saturday for an hour and a half, worked through all the damages that the city of Witten is going to be submitting in a project. And then, I got clarification on who program managers are that they've been assigned for a union and new providence. So, I anticipate hearing from them yet this week or the beginning of next week. The person that I talked to last Saturday with Aaron said she would be talking to them and getting them on the ball. So, they have 60 days. Once that program manager comes in and we get the paperwork, which that was sent out, that was sent out yesterday, and so they have 60 days to put their project together so that they can get reimbursement. And all the communities are going to be fine with that, because they've all been working on their Excel spreadsheets prior to this. So, and then, the last thing that I have is that, I'll only do two things. There's been a bunch of training going on, even though we are in a virtual world as far as train, we have a tabletop exercise today with Critical Infrastructure Security Administration on cyber and cyber threats. That will be going on with several participants over at my office. Somebody shaking their head. Somebody will be there. And then, we also are doing a class tomorrow, and it was sent out to all the economic development, both economic development people that I had contact with and to the chambers on community planning for economic recovery, which is one of the things that's been a question with the deratio and how communities are going to be able to withstand expenses of the ratio. So, timely, timely class come out, community planning and for economic recovery, and that's tomorrow. We have several very enthused participants ready to come to the training tomorrow. And then, as far as the house, the house demolition and this, I think Lance is on the phone, but that is going to be put off until March, March or April. Aaron and I talked this morning, the city of Eldora has got two houses that they want done this year, and so they can only do two training, what we call do training burns in a calendar year, and they can, they have to be .6 miles apart, and we're not outside that. So, Aaron asked if we would, if ours were the third gender, if we could put it off, and we've been this long. We're going to use the winter to train, a bunch of hands-on training in the house with simulated smoke, but the actual demolition will not happen until next calendar year. And during that time, I also have looked at the Eldora ordinance on demolition of property, and so I'm having to also look at what it's going to cost to get the debris hauled out. Once we burn it down, then the basement has to be dug out, all the debris has to be hauled out. And if I was not mistaken, you can't use secondary roads for that, because all the secondary road equipment is a DOT transportation kind of thing. And so, digging out, digging out debris and city property, that's a question I see Taylor making a little bit of question on that. So, we may still have discussions on that, but I'm looking at that process so we're sure we get, cover all of our bases when we get the property down, so we don't have anything left as a dangerous property. So.
Lot of good information this morning. Any questions? Lance, do you have any questions on the house?
No, I don't. I think you answered everything. I thought we were looking at Mark's project anyway, so time's good.
All right. Thanks.
Thanks, Summer.
All right. The next item I have is the change, or potential change of date and time of the November 11th regular meeting, due to that being better day and one of our holidays.
I will make a motion to set November 10th at 9:00 AM for a regular board meeting for that week.
I will second that.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passing. Next we have is public comment. Matt?
Okay. Attorney Meyer, I'll let you go ahead and speak first. I've gotten a few questions or inquiries, concerns from some citizens about location of election signage near the courthouse, and I just wanted to make sure that the public knows, for their information, that the rule requires that there be no signage within 300 feet of the entry to the courthouse. And since we have a single point of entry, that would be our east entrance, so the 300-foot rule is measured from that distance even during early voting on Election Day, unless ballots are received here even on Election Day. And I'm kind of asking, they can still be received here, they can be turned in here. So, it would include the doorway of our courthouse on November 3, the north door of the EOC on November 3, and this is far as voting in Eldora, this would be the doorway to the city hall. So, it's 300 feet from the doorway, not from the four corners of our courthouse square. Just wanted to clarify that.
Except on a vehicle.
I believe that includes vehicles. That'd be from the doorway. I believe it does. If you disagree on that, I think it's 300 feet from the doorway.
I didn't go to law school. I just go with what's provided to me.
Yes. Other public comment?
I would like to.
Okay.
There's also an exemption for private property, so please don't call and complain when there is a sign on a public residence or a private residence, sorry, that's next to the building, because that is a prime example would be the Barlow Library in Iowa Falls shares a driveway and part of the parking lot with two houses on that side of the street, and they have every right to have those signs placed in those areas on Election Day. So, I just want to state that. And then, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact that you just approved a very considerable raise for someone, and this is in no way a poor reflection on Jess. I think she's very deserving, and I think she does a good job. But I would like to state on behalf of those who aren't here and can't state it, that it appears that preference is given to people who always report directly to you or are not under the direct supervision of elected officials, because that salary, while it's reflective of a department head, and I understand that, is considerably more than the deputies make in most offices up there, including mine, and they in no way work any less than them. So, it sends a clear message when raises are doled out in excess of two digits to people who work directly and under you guys and not under the direction of elected officials. That's all I want to say.
Anybody else can unmute themselves?
Hello? Hello? Question?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I have a question for the sheriff. Is he still here?
Yes, I am.
Oh, good. Okay, when it comes to passive electioneering campaign signs, who has jurisdiction for enforcing that?
Well, I believe some of it, law enforcement will ultimately get involved if that's necessary, whether it be in the city limits and a local jurisdiction handles it, or the sheriff's office. But we typically will go at the direction of the auditor normally gets the complaint and forwards it to us. Periodically, we'll get the complaint directly, and we'll address it then at that time.
Um, so, the sheriff's department would get it as opposed to, as opposed to the city?
Not necessarily. It could be either or.
Okay, because of, you know, it involves county property. Okay, that's what I needed to know. Um, all right, thanks.
This is Pauline Lloyd. I have a couple of questions. Seems like last week I started in with my questions, but got muted. So, this week I would appreciate not getting muted, and let me finish my questions. The first question I have is from last week that I was going to ask, and that probably would go to actually really Thomas. I didn't really understand something about our building of 39,000, and it was for, something for a bid, and it was going to be submitted, and we were going to get money back from FEMA and the government and federal money and all this and that. And I guess my question to him is, how can he be assured that we are going to get this money back when funds were distributed wrong to the governor on the money that she got for COVID to be used? And I believe that was like, if I'm not wrong, like 31, was it $1 million, I believe, or something like that? So, that has to be paid back. So, how, how do, how can we be assured that we're going to get this money and we've already spent this money?
Sure. Thomas, do you want to address that?
So, yes, there is some discussion at the state level about whether the state auditor and the state governor's office have agreement on how money was spent, but that has nothing to do with... state auditor and the state governor's office have agreement on how money was spent, but that has nothing to do with um, the public assistance funds, those are written out and, um, the CARES money for COVID and our expenses are specifically for COVID, so I would, uh, everything that we've submitted has justification behind it and even if a federal auditor comes into to my office, um, I have all the receipts and the reasons why equipment was purchased, or supplies were purchased and, uh, how we justify those in the COVID response and somewhat recovery as we move forward.
Okay, but I, I thought they did mention the CARES though too, that that was part of it too, or, or, or what, or is the CARES not part of that then?
But that, but because of the way that the CARES money went out, there's about ten thousand different directions that that money went and our money is set aside for COVID response. And what's up?
Okay, alright, thank you. And I'm, I missed out on the, well, about three quarters of the meeting, I didn't, I had a phone call and didn't get in on the meeting till about, um, I think that I got in on the Environmental Health and Zoning Administration is where I came in at. Um, cause I had a phone call, so my, um, next question is gonna be, um, when are we going to, it's kind of been referred down here in the southern part of the county as, um, BJ's Road, is what we've been calling it. So when are we going to open that and why is it taking so long and, uh, we've kind of been wondering, um, are we gonna open the road or are we gonna wait till, um, BJ, you build your hog confinements and your cattle thing or what? What, what's with your road?
Already been addressed today, we're not gonna answer it again.
But, but I didn't, I didn't hear.
The minutes are, uh, and the meeting will be posted and you can watch the meeting later, that's why we archive it the way we do. So, other public comments? Okay, hearing none, other business?
Yeah, sorry, BJ, can I step in? It's Matt, raised up with a paper. Um, so I'm not there. Quick question, uh, maybe I missed something when you approved the agenda on mine. Uh, number sixteen is a request for mask requirement for entering courthouse and I think you went from fifteen to seventeen and skipped over that, is there, am I missing something there?
Matt, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, Renee moved to amend the agenda to remove that item.
Okay, I did miss that then, I just wanted to double check that I missed something there. Thanks.
Sorry, Matt.
Could I say one more thing?
Yeah, Jessica.
Um, I looked real quickly and, um, the information that was given to me did not specifically say, um, from the door and I looked it up and I'll conclude that Daryl is correct that it says from the door, but the information provided, the auditors did not make that distinction, so Daryl is correct and I'd like to read that.
Thank you. Other business, Lance, well, since you're on the phone.
None.
I am none.
This time I can ask for adjournment or recess.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned.